Today is Tuesday, July 29. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 8, 2014 Annual Organizational and Regular Meeting?
Uh, so moved.
Lisa, can I take my ear off? This discussion follows in favor. It's, um, Shulkin, Brose, Paul, Plushauer, and Walker abstentions. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 21, 2014 Special Meeting?
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
Second by paper. Discussion follows in favor. To the unanimous opposed in favor. We have a lot to do for public comment. Public, we should, uh, yeah. If you guys could just use this microphone closer to you for just, um, Mark or Lisa to get us to be all for one.
Okay.
Public comment. Okay, see you, John. Uh, move on to 2014-15 Board Goal Development Update.
Okay, well, at our, uh, Board Goals Workshop last week, uh, we spent, I thought, a good chunk of time discussing, uh, some, uh, some directions that, uh, the board felt, uh, would be helpful for the school district going into the coming year. And what, uh, what I tried to do, as we had discussed, is distill about three or four hours worth of conversation. No, try to distill about three or four hours' worth of conversation and, and comments into a set of draft goals for your review, consideration, modification, whatever, uh, before we get to the point where we feel that they're ready for primetime and, uh, ready for, for board approval, which is not what we're planning to do this evening. Um, at one point, we had talked about, uh, possibly four goals, but just in putting it together, I, I took a shot at, um, combining those last two topics we were talking about, trying to combine them into one, uh, one goal that maybe made some, some sense and some, had some coherence, but again, as, as I mentioned to you, I would, uh, take the stab at drafting them with, with no pride in the authorship of that document, just to give us something to start, uh, to start, uh, considering and making some changes to. So I, I offer that up as a starting place, based on your conversations. If I, you know, I made some editorial decisions in putting those together and I was unable to, uh, to include all the little soundbites that I'd, uh, that I'd scripted during our meeting, but I tried to get the general sense of the conversation. So if I missed the mark in any way, or you, you want to see any of those goal statements going in a different direction, or amplified, or you feel they're too wordy, you know, we can, we can work with that. So I also.
Um, I think you did a very nice job, Joe. Um, and, uh, at least as far as I'm concerned, I think you captured, uh, the essence of the discussion and the things that we agreed to at the conclusion of the workshop. Um, one thing that I want to get your sense of is if, whether you think that these goals, or these draft goals as stated, are likely to provide enough of a foundation for you and the administrators to do the work with the rest of the staff that you're going to be doing this year?
Yeah, I'm actually, you know, I was, that was going through, through my mind, not only during the, the Goals Workshop, but also in trying to distill all of that into, uh, you know, into a handful of goals. And I, you know, I couldn't help but be thinking about the various tasks that can be done across the board. You know, some of them at the board level, many of them at the administrative level, some of them, uh, for example, communications at the teacher level, you know, the food service, not so much, the teacher level, but, you know, administratively and, and within the, uh, you know, the food service staff. So I, you know, they're not, I don't think all three of them go across the board for every employee, and that's okay. I don't think that has to be necessarily, but certainly, uh, the communication goal and the planning goal, we're going to deal with, uh, with program, with, uh, with curriculum. So I think they're relevant to not only our administrators, but, you know, our, our line staff in, in all the buildings. And again, the food service goal is a little more specific to the business office and the food service manage, management staff, uh, but, uh, you know, I think that's, that's okay. So I, I think there's plenty there to do regarding all the goals that can actually move the district ahead in each of those goal areas. I, you know, I, for none of these, I was sitting here scratching my head saying, you know, what are we going to do to, to make that goal happen? It was like, wow, how many, how much time do we have to, to do a lot of the things that are, that are out there? They're even talking about, you know, nothing, you know, for none of these goals are we kind of starting from square one, either we've been working on them in one form or another in past years, so it's a case of updating, renewing, doing some things differently. Uh, so I, I think there's plenty there for everybody to, to dig into most of kind of all of those goals and do some things differently during the coming year, like improvements in, in all of those areas.
One of the things that I found, um, interesting during the workshop discussion was the, the sense that the district's goals help in communications with the staff, to impress upon the staff that this is something that's not just your desire, or Marvin's desire, or Brett's desire, or whatever, but that's something that, um, the district as a whole, you know, going right up to the board level, considers to be something to be worked towards. And I, I, reading these, I thought that that came through, um, and, you know, as drafts person, I'm sure that you agree that that, that that's the case. Um, so your expectation would be that that would be, that would be useful to you in that communication process?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And, you know, I think that's, that's another reason for, um, for writing these goals to be at least more general and less specific, because then it gives us plenty of leeway. It also gives us leeway for new ideas to be brought into the mix, just because we didn't think of that, doesn't mean somebody else might have a good idea, so we can fold that into the, uh, you know, into the process. Uh, I'm, just as an example, unless the board decides to take a, take a hard right turn, say, on the communication goal, I've already been talking with our administrators about that, and that I expect that's going to be at least one of the, the three goals. So let's start talking about that. We've already started that dialogue, uh, and I suspect that what our discussions thus far this summer are, are, if, if we wind up with anything close to what I've artic, what I've articulated here, I think those discussions are gonna, uh, are gonna fold right in. I started sending some emails out to, uh, to the members of, uh, the board who were involved in that meeting that we had with the RTA and our communications, just to kind of re-stoke those fires and get people thinking of that, not say anything about, hey, this is going to be a board goal, but let's, let's start thinking about that again. Let's start thinking about how we might start addressing that as administrators, as teachers, so they won't be too surprised when they find out that one of the goals is that one. I, I don't mean just to focus on communication, but, you know, we've already started, kind of, things moving.
Okay.
So, and again, unless you come up with three totally different. All time, that's, and then board, board starts. Yeah, yeah. Plenty of time, though. This is, this is fairly early for us to be this far along in the goal-setting process, but that's good. I mean, and part of the reason is we had difficulty in other years finding time and opportunity during the summer when all seven board members are available. So we got lucky this time, and we met early, and we're glad we jumpedstart the process. I actually have three quarters of the year to start working on my goals related to getting these goals instead of, I think last year, we adopted goals in October, and then mine were in November, and the year's almost over by then, so this is the timing wise, anyway.
Did I see your hand up?
Um, I was, I was intended to, so this, okay. You've got more power than I thought. First off, I'd like to congratulate you also for your wordsmithery here. This is, uh, it makes us sound better than I thought we sounded.
It's my job.
We're fairly alike. Um, I like the fact that each of these, or all of them, kind of reflects a role for everybody, and I, this is going to become trite if I keep using the word educational community, but if we can continue for a while to think of it that way, everybody in the entire educational community has some role they could play here. It appears to me that therefore it's our job to kind of get everybody to play the role in the educational community, and thank you in regard to Lisa's comment or question that you've already started, at least to go ahead with, uh, some of the, the activities that could be done here. Honestly, I'm excited about it.
Laura?
Um, yeah, thank you very much, Joe. You're, you're excellent at taking all of our myriad ideas and synthesizing them. Question and a comment, and it is sort of a, a little bit of a right turn, but, um, on the, on last year's goals, we had indicators of progress. Do you intend to include those as we get further into the process this year?
Well, um, that's a good question. I believe that when, when I've written my goals, I've included implementation strategies and indicators of progress. We haven't always done that for board goals. Uh, I mean, some years we have, I think this past year we did, most years we haven't. I, I also encouraged the board last year, you may recall, that in adopting goals, to adopt the goals as goals, because sometimes if we're using this to create aspirations for our staff, throwing a whole bunch of, well, the board wants to see this, 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 and this happen, again, I don't want to delimit the creativity that the rest of the staff may bring to the table in order to suggest things to do to accomplish those goals. But if we want to do that for our own purposes as a board, we can, I mean, we can have board committees flush that out, and there's any number of ways we can do that. That's, uh, you know, we, in my opinion, when the board adopts a, a manageable number of goals, and we put them on our website, and we hand them out to our staff and say, these are the board's goals for the district for the coming year, I want to give them three or four succinct statements, I don't want to give them three pages of goal statements and, uh, you know, subheadings under what we might do and what we don't, I don't want to complicate it for, for everybody else. If we want to develop them by way of, uh, maybe doing some self-assessment, we can do that. My goal was get these two goals down on paper, and let's see where we're going with these. So it's really up to the board as to whether you want to do anything more than, than what's here.
No, I, I think for the purposes of district goals, these are clean and, and that works. Um, my, my veering off to the right is, and this is, I'm just throwing it out for discussion, I'm sorry that Deirdre and Diane aren't here. For number three, in the, in number B, or letter B, um, I love this celebration piece, and I really would like it to remain in the goals. Somehow it seems more of a communication piece to me than a planning piece, um, and it seems to flow into what we're hoping to achieve in terms of open communication, celebrating staff achievement, student achievement, graduate achievement. So if the board agrees or, or thinks that that makes a little bit more sense, maybe we could scoot that one into the communication goal.
It's easily enough done, certainly. The reason I put it there is because
That's the way we discussed it, yeah.
Next to that discussion that we were talking about, but, uh, I was thinking, through my process here, yeah, that is, that is a communication goal. Um, you know, I was kind of linking it to the planning piece, because you do the planning, and then the outcomes are what we're celebrating, so we're, you know, the celebration part of this is, is linked to the fruits of the planning process, so I mean, you could, and I don't think it makes a significant difference, at least it doesn't to me, as long as it's in there somewhere, I think it's, you know, it's a positive tone.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I think it'll be either way, whatever your voice pleasure.
Yeah, um, part B of number three, I also was wondering about the relationship with communication. It's true that the way we've shaped, or you've helped us to think about shaping, goal number one around communication is around partnering between families and teachers and, and to improve engagement and understanding of the mission of the district. So that's a slightly different objective under communication than what we were talking about here, so maybe it could become a two-part, um, set of objectives under that heading of communication. One, one question I had, though, was about the word celebration, as much as I love to celebrate, um, I, it, it strikes, strikes me that there's kind of a range of things we might want to be communicating, you know, acknowledgement, learning from the practices that are taking place, that perhaps others can benefit from, honoring, it's a whole kind of range of things. I wouldn't want to sort of assume that we're, we're just going to celebrate everything. There might be, you know, different kinds of responses that we can capture in the way we articulate that goal. But I also want to say that the way you've brought these three points together, it's very exciting to me, because we've had a lot of discussion behind all three of these goals for an entire year leading up to this, and it seems as if it's becoming very crystallized, what we hope to accomplish around each of them this year, so, thank you.
Well, let me, if I, if I can, let me say that my, my natural inclination is to, is to fight the sheer number of, of goals.
Yes.
But as, as you, as you're talking here, um, it might be making the case to see what it would look like to break that out into a separate fourth goal and maybe expand on that a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, I'd be willing to take a, to take a whack at that and see if people think, yeah, that covers a little bit, bit more waterfront, or, you know, it's kind of redundant, so.
Yeah.
You know, depending on how you feel, I can see if that stands alone and is, has enough meat to it as a, as a fourth goal, and then I'll, I'll admit defeat.
It's a valiant effort.
So then, thank you for that feedback, and that's a good feedback.
Anyone else?
Well, uh, thank you, everyone. I'm sorry, but the plan, and part of the plan is regardless of how they're phrased when we actually adopt them, is to revisit them, it actually takes some time to revisit them at least halfway through the year, which is suggested, and talk about them and see what needs to be kind of finessed at that point, is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, we usually put them on the board January, and we do this for discussion, just kind of where we are at this point.
All right. Well, uh, thank you, everyone, for taking time out of your schedules last week to attend the reunion, you know, spend the time to start crafting the growth goals, I think we're well ahead of, um, other years in getting goals together, Joe, for, um, organizing what was, uh, the call meeting to, uh, half page of, of words for goals, so. State aid resolutions for consideration.
Okay, uh, I provided you with some information that, that I had received, uh, a couple weeks ago from the Midwestern School Study Council. Uh, there are a number of statewide associations or regional associations, in addition to the, the Midwestern School Study Council, that, uh, has been very concerned about the general topic of state aid, um, and in particular, the, uh, the gap elimination adjustment and, uh, the, uh, the desire that that be removed from the state aid calculus, especially since, uh, according to our governor, there's, you know, $2 billion, $2 billion dollars in surplus, and it hardly seems necessary to be taking state away, state aid away from school districts if there's, there's that kind of money available. Uh, so there are, as you're aware from having read the information I provided to you, there are, uh, there are two different, uh, two different, uh, proposals, positions, resolutions that, uh, that Study Council is urging boards to, to take. Uh, one is specific to the gap elimination adjustment and calling, uh, to our legislators and our, our governor to, uh, to get rid of the gap elimination adjustment once and for all from the coming budget development cycle. So, I mean, they won't tap on that until, until the, the springtime, but, uh, instead of kind of reducing it piecemeal over the next several years, which is kind of what the talk has, has been around the state, that just, just get rid of it once and for all. Obviously, there are, there are school districts out there, um, who are, um, who are on the verge of bankruptcy, for whom the elimination of the gap, elimination, the gap elimination adjustment would bring much, much needed and immediate relief to them. Uh, that's essentially the first resolution. Uh, the, uh, that's the one I, in my note to you, I call that one a no-brainer, um, and I still feel that way. Uh, the second resolution addresses the call for the state to establish a, a commission, an independent commission to look into the issue of, uh, the equity of, of state aid formulas in the state, and obviously to recommend, change was the burger commission, was a commission that addressed, uh, the healthcare, uh, the healthcare crisis in our state, made recommendations about closing certain hospitals and consolidating, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, my only caveat with that particular resolution, I just want, if, if our board's going to adopt one or both resolutions, we just ought to do it with our eyes wide open, and my, my concern is that there's, there's no telling what the outcome of a burger-style commission might be, and it could very well be that we may get less state aid as a result of those deliberations than we do now. I just want to make sure if we're going to carry a flag for some cause, we're aware of the potential positive and negative ramifications of that before we, we act on it. Um, you know, on, on one hand, if, if such a commission were to say, you know, everybody is, uh, you know, is held harmless where they are now, and we'll provide additional state aid for those districts that are, that are in very bad shape financially, such a recommendation would tend not to hurt our school district. If the solution is, well, take from the wealthy school districts and give to the, to the less wealthy school districts, then whether that's the right thing or the wrong thing, it's going to have an impact on, on our school district and our students. So, again, there's, you know, there's all sorts of, that's a philosophical conundrum that's wrapped up in that particular, in my opinion, that's wrapped up in that particular, uh, proposal. So before we even get to the point where the board may want to, uh, take a position on that, I just thought I'd lay it out for you and give you opportunity to, to think about whether that's something that, whether either one of them are proposals that you want to back, or what you want to come in on, thanks but no thanks. I'm just putting it out there. I anticipate other school districts may be, uh, adopting one or both, and, uh, just once you know what's going on out there in the world of state aid.
Lisa?
Um, a couple of comments. The first is, I agree with you about the gap elimination adjustment resolution. I don't see any downside, you know, we're going on record, along with probably every school district in the state, um, that this is a bad thing and it should be eliminated. Um, I'm skeptical that, that will have that effect, but I don't see any harm in doing it, um, and I certainly want, wouldn't want to be standing in the way of something like that, because it's ultimately to our benefit. Um, I had wanted to ask, though, I seem to recall that there was a lawsuit that was filed not long ago, similar to the lawsuits that had been filed in previous years for, um, the, um, the school funding, the state school funding formulas, um, and I was wondering if you knew where that stood, because that covers some of the same ground as this material does.
Yeah, I'd have to do a little research just to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. I mean, the, you know, the, uh, the lawsuit back a number of years ago, that was primarily, primarily focused on, uh, funding of education, New York City, and then it kind of spread to the other big cities.
Right.
Well, I mean, we know that the state hasn't
Complyed.
Done anything to comply with that, and it's been a number of years.
Right, and I seem to remember that there was a lawsuit brought this past school year, along the same lines, basically, you, you, you state were ordered to change your school aid funding formula, and then you pled, uh, financial inability because of the economic downturn. Now that things have turned around, you can do it, but you aren't doing it. I was just wondering where that stood.
I, I'd have to do a little research on that and look into that.
And then the last thing that I would say is, I, I too would be hesitant to take the position that the way to resolve this problem, the funding issue, is by having a burger-style commission, because I remember the issues that cropped up when the commission issued its recommendations, which were, I think, adopted across the board, on hospital closures and consolidations, and just in this area, it created a lot of, a lot of disruption over in Kingston. I mean, I think they had a really terrible time, um, and I'm not sure that I want to put that in the hands of people who don't really necessarily have a concern about our district.
Yeah, it would depend on what the mandate of a commission like that was. As you said, we can see how smoothly it's gone with the Kingston situation. We certainly wouldn't want them to have the mandate that said, oh, what would be efficient is for Reinbeck and Red Hook and Hyde Park and Pine Plains to all become one huge, very efficient district. The communities wouldn't accept that, so I think that's reasonable also. If I can back into the other one, uh, there is a political consideration here which might make the support of this even more important, and that is, it looks to me like the co-pilots of the legislature are going to be controlled by the Democrats. So the Democratic governor, you know, in the important election coming up here, if, if the deal we're all hearing about in terms of the Senate, the state senate goes through, the Democrats are going to be much more likely to support this, or respond to this kind of a proposal from us than the split legislature would, so I think it might be a wise thing for us to all get together and support the, uh, gap adjustment and let them know that we're, we really need it, and we feel badly, and we have been hurt by the gap adjustment as it's gone over the years, so, for whatever those thoughts are worth.
Okay. All right, so I would add my support for a, I think, a resolution, a gap elimination adjustment, with concern about, you know, any kind of commission that, or that's we vote against.
Yeah, I think with the commission idea, too, another down, potential downside is the, the, the further erosion of local control over, over some decisions that may be made for us by a, by a independent commission. We want, uh, a fair, more equitable, uh, state aid picture, it could involve other, other things that, uh, we at least, we want to maintain that control amongst a, a duly-elected Board of Education, and they, and they erode that, and they not. I mean, there's just no telling how that might go, and that's part of my concern, is the uncertainty of how it, it might play out.
Um, I just, to add to that, the, the uncertainty of what might happen if a commission got hold of the issue, is that a commission would not be, I assume hold of the issue, is that a commission would not be, I assume, empowered to look at the state aid, the state aid, excuse me, the, the tax levy cap, because part of our problem in funding programs is that we are limited by the tax levy cap, and so a reapportionment of state aid without some cap, cap relief could leave us in a very bad situation. You know, I wouldn't want to be behind a result like that.
Okay. So move on to new news. Move on to new news. Hi, everyone. We have thirty-four students returned last week from a trip to Spain, France, which was led by two of our high-grade teachers and also of our school secretaries. So I understand that was a good experience for all and the members of our staff that participated.
I would like to ask, I, I knew that the trip was coming up, I didn't realize that I'd already taken place, I'm very excited to hear about that, and I'd like to ask if you think it would be possible, Joe, maybe at one of the early board meetings after the school, the school opens again, if we could hear a presentation from one or both of the teachers who led the trip about how it went and what they did and their feelings about future trips along this line.
I would, I'm, I'm sure we could arrange for that if that's something that the board would like. I would just bring to the board's attention and remind the board that that trip was not a school trip.
Understood.
So if we bring people here to address the board about a non-school trip, I'm fine with that. It opens the door to doing something we've typically not done, which is bring outside groups in and present to the board, but that's something the board would like to do, I'm sure we could, well, ask, and if they are able to, you know, to make themselves available. I'm sure they will.
Okay, thank you. It's good news that perhaps members of our community aren't aware of, because we don't all come into the building in July and August, but a tremendous amount of industry is underway in our hallways, cleaning and reapportioning of resources, and it's really quite heartening to come in and see all of this work that's done in a relatively short window of time on the facilities of our campus, and so I think that's good news and should be recognized.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that I spoke with, with Steve Jensen this morning, and our wireless project is almost done.
Wow.
Quite as soon than they had originally been ballparking it to be done by mid-August, and it may, you know, it may drag out until then, but I mean, the all wiring's been pulled and they're basically testing, you know, all the spots in both buildings to make sure it's, you know, we have the full coverage that we're, that we're paying for as part of that project. So, yeah, it's moving on quite, quite well.
This is only one-third serious, but it is one-third serious. Does that mean we could have a meeting over in Chancellor sometime early on and have each of us have a tablet? Have Steve take us through it, and we could actually...
Wouldn't that be a nice idea?
Yeah, I said it was one-third, but it is one-third.
We certainly could.
Why not?
In fact, there, this past year, there, there was a board, an ad hoc board committee that was studying the idea of payables working, so...
And is still.
And we're hoping to make a presentation in the fall.
Yes.
They're, they're a little bit aheady on that.
He's right on it though.
Yeah, exactly.
That capacity certainly makes it easier to have.
And some of you know how limited I am in terms of tech, so for me to suggest that at all, I'll follow along. Don't be a burden.
Move on to new news. Do you want the whole business? The whole business? I don't. Okay. We have a little opportunity for public comment? Steve, any other?
Yeah, I have one other, and I had mentioned to you in my, in my memo to you over the weekend, asking you to consider your availability for the possibility of, of making some, some hires sooner rather than later. Again, my, my concern, and you, you never know this until you get a better idea of what your, what positions you have to fill and what the timing is with them, but I would, I would hate to lose good candidates to another school district that is maybe meeting earlier in August than, we are meeting next, we're meeting next on August 19. And sometimes it could be the difference of a week where somebody gets an offer from another school district, and that's where they go, and then we lose out on our preferred candidate. So if, if it's at all possible, I'm, I'm asking whether sometime next week, it could be next Tuesday, the 5th, it could be later in the week, it really, you know, the exact date is not as important as doing it before the 19th, preferably next week. Both Mr. Keditzer and Dr. Davenport are involved in, in hiring for several positions and felt that they would be ready to make a recommendation by, by sometime next week. So I would suggest if there is agreement on the board to call a special meeting, and if there can be at least a forum of the board, which would be at least four board members there, I would recommend that to reach you, so if, if you're available and you're, you're willing.
Yes.
I am not here next week, but if there's a quorum, please go ahead. I am here the following week and will make myself available.
I am available. I'm available?
Question mark.
Not every minute of next week, but should we send you the, the days we're around next week?
It might be easier instead of taking time tonight.
I'll send it. Okay.
If I'm getting the sense that there is general agreement amongst you that if we can, and I'm not assuming that because I haven't heard from everybody around the state this evening, but if, if there is general agreement that that's a good thing, and we can get at least a forum of the board together in the same place at the same time, in what I would expect would not be a, a two-hour meeting, I would imagine we could take care of that kind of business in a reasonably short amount of time, then I would go ahead and establish such a meeting at your, at the convenience of as many of you as we could have.
Just a question, though I'll be away, I will have email access, so I don't know whether it's legal to vote in absentia or any of that, if you don't have a quorum sitting in the room.
My sense is it's not legal, but we certainly provide you a little information that we provide everybody else, and to provide it digitally as well, but no, you couldn't, you couldn't call on your phone.
Put my two cents in.
I was here on our 30th anniversary, but I'm going to be in Maine for the next two weeks, so...
Okay. All right, and I, I will not be available till Thursday, but I will be in Canada. All right. Any other other? Okay, so we move on to our items. Does anyone wish to remove anything for the consent agenda? I have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve a consent agenda.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
Second by Deere. All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to modify the recent appointment of Sarah Beeler for the position of English teacher assigned to Reinbeck High School effective September 1st, 2014, in the tenure area of English, from a three-year to a two-year probationary appointment, given documentation of a prior tenure appointment in New York State, effective September 1st, 2015.
Two thousand.
Two thousand five.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
Second by Deere. All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2014 special education curriculum, clerical, and program work.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
Second by Deere. All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve mentors for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
By Deere. All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of the leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Julie Tate, having commenced on or about June 2nd, 2014. Would such leave be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her approved sick leave, and thereafter such leave be taken as unpaid childcare leave through January 4th, 2015?
So moved.
By Lisa.
Seconded.
By Deere. All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Samantha Robbins as athletic trainer for the 2014-15 school year at a stipend of $29,266 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2014-15.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
By Deere. Any discussion? Rick?
No.
We're ahead of the game.
You're just ready.
I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of David Airstock as district health and wellness coordinator for the 2014-15 school year at a stipend of $4,588 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2014-15.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
By Deere. Any discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of David Airstock to conduct selection classification fitness testing for the fall 2014-15 fall sport season as necessary.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
By Deere. Discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Joseph L. Fallon as deputy purchasing agent effective July 30th, 2014, through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
By Deere. Any discussion?
I have a question. Joe, is Tom the purchasing agent? So this would just be in his, if he's unavailable.
That's correct, and what, what prompted this was the fact that he's on vacation for two weeks, so if we need to approve any purchases before he gets back, I'll be the one to do that, and then we thought, you know what, why don't we just make it effective through the end of the school year, so if there are any situations where he's not here, we're not, we're not held up.
Excellent.
All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Beth Eddy to the civil service position of teacher aide, 1.0 FTE, at a salary of step 10, $26,487, assigned to the Reinbeck High School, effective September 2nd, 2014, in accordance with the ante-salary schedule for 2014.
No, it's real 13-14.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Deere. All is in favor. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to increase Lucy Bunker's appointment to the civil service position of teacher aide, assigned to the Reinbeck High School, from 3.75 hours to 4.75 hours per day, effective September 2nd, 2014, at a rate of 17.09 per hour in accordance with the ante-salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
By Deere. Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion, please, to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of a particular person.
So moved.
By Lisa.
Second.
By Deere. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I move into executive session.